Really? Bert, you'd be sooner, your mic is on. And Sarah, let me know when you're ready.
We're going.
We're ready, okay.
But, who's on?
Yours isn't green. Gym isn't green.
Oh, this light one is.
Oh, gotcha.
My light doesn't work.
Uh, are we good? Well, good, okay. Uh, good afternoon. It is Monday, September eighth at four thirty-nine. I'm going to give you two all the trust for being here, um, this afternoon. I'm gonna call this meeting in order. That's what I'm gonna do. Sarah, would you please, uh, well, I guess we don't need to do roll call for everybody who's here. Would you ask about conflicts of interest, please?
Uh, Tracy Mill.
No conflict.
Jesse Aronston.
No conflict.
Jesse So.
No conflict.
Jesse Miller.
No conflict.
Jesse Turner.
No conflict.
Maryka Jomsova.
Uh, no.
We're here.
And I have many, but thank you, Sarah. Items of discussion for today during the workshop is Three Lakes Watershed Association update and Grand Lake Center budget for twenty twenty-six.
And due to unseen circumstances, the Three Lakes Watershed Association will not be able to present it.
Okay, so, more time. We will have the Grand Lake Center budget. Ladies, come to the front.
I will stay fine.
Just these.
Let us do.
For your information, some, oh, in the packet is some discussion. I expect that we'll bring every department head before you to have an open discussion. Um, and kind of talk about some of their capital purchases along with what future plans for twenty twenty-six will look like for each department. Crystal was on top of it and provided me with her information two weeks ago. So, I wanted to have her and Katie here to talk to you specifically about some of the big ticket items and to be able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for being on top of it. I didn't do it on purpose, but I did it. Or is yours, okay?
Does any, any, does anybody want a hard copy of their budget? Is it the same ones to give us last year? It is, oh, two pager that was in your packet.
Looks like this.
Can I say yes?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
You guys want to discuss? Um, I have all, a lot, almost everything that I've talked to you guys about before. There's a couple of extra things on here just because, um, I know the slipper walkways in front of mountain parks or Middle Park Health is completely crumbling and there's people trying to get pictures and out on the outside. Unfortunately, even though it's kind of pricey, um, it's also dangerous, so. And is that just in front of Middle Park Medical? Um, I was looking at our main walkway and our walkway looks good except for the first two patches. And might be able to make it a little bit longer in condition then if we did the medical side. So it's safe. I'm waiting on both for that. I thought it would be about five to ten, but, uh, I talked to Katie in our, uh, concrete and he thought that the area by the medical center was a little bigger than he remembered, so it might be somewhere between ten and fifteen for both sides. And then we can, let's do one side or do both if that's, if we want to fix that this year or if, um, I don't think it can be fixed anyway. I think Matt thought it might be able to fix and there were some materials bought that that work was never done and that was, um, a couple of years ago. So it's been a couple more winters. I could always ask them if it can be fixed. It's just, it's all taking off. So, so yeah. So long.
Can I ask a question on this topic?
Sure.
Because this is in front of the medical center and people in realtors will be going in there, walkers, my dad, for example. And they're going into the medical facility. Isn't this a liability issue for them?
It's a liability for us. They're a tenant.
Yeah.
And their lease is for us inside.
Okay.
So if one of their patients slips, falls, trips or otherwise injures themselves, we're going to stay there outside the door of the medical center. It's our responsibility.
So we cannot ask them?
We can change the terms of their lease and that opens up a door that, um, both Crystal and Katie would love to have because, um, we have given away that space since it's been owned. And it makes those copies too.
Still a very minimal, if not insistent rental payment?
Yes.
Um, would you speak to Crystal and Katie? You know, remember you're on record, but could you speak to some of those concerns or issues that you have with the medical facility and gain an offer?
Um, I don't feel like they utilize space. I feel like even when they're open, um, the only time I really look at this is when Dr. Paulson's there. Obviously, people want Dr. Paulson. Um, but when the other doctor's there, he's still building his clientele, um, in the summer. I feel like it needs to be urgent care. I just feel like it's not being used for what we need it for. Right? You can't get your blood drawn there necessarily. Usually it's an injury break. It's like they put in a x-ray machine and then they've never used it because they have, they don't staff it. So, I don't know how much they really want to be there either. I, I'm not sure. It's, to me, I feel like, you know, that space could either be rented or we move the office back down there and take that back to them. But it's a good rental, it's a good office space for, for a company. Company does want to rent it and we are comfortable on our end.
I mean, if they're paying a regular.
Yeah, if they were paying.
Company of speed. Yeah, it wouldn't really be a difference, right, whether they're.
Right.
They're not. Um, have we tried getting any information? Is this off top edge or pretty?
No. It'd be present. It's, it's a use of the Grand Lake Center and it's something that impacts their budget a lot.
I would like to understand, um, as a medication with Middle Park Health, uh, because all the other family clinics are on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think it would be important for them to kind of just look at, I mean, we've got names and addresses of their current patients within the practice. I think it would be important for them to understand what the needs are and maybe mold that around it. Um, I agree. I don't think anyone's going there like, oh, it's broken. Probably don't need an extra dismembering of the process of, that, um, ready. Um, but just for regular patient care, I still think there's a need for, maybe we just move them to make it a priority.
I've never been a Yosemite or actually liked a meager. I run down the hall all the time and where somebody has a medical issue and they happen to be open and loves literally having them there because I'm like, they're there. And, but, um, like the, as far as I know, like the town wants them there, so therefore, you know, that takes the space so that we can't re, use revenue for that space. So I've always felt like that's not fair, you know, um, but I've always heard that they don't want to be here unless it's free. And to me, that doesn't make sense either because they have a presence in every other community. So, they're building a hospital in Frazier, they're in Winter Park, they're in Brandy, they're in Premier, you know. They were, uh, as far as I know, they're working with Horizons or something like that to use the facility one day a week, uh, to allow counseling, uh, people to do counseling there. So.
In the same space.
In the same space, um.
On day they're not open, correct?
I think so.
Yes. Kind of more space utilization.
Um, but it would be nice if they saw value in it and, you know, because we have to put the electric bill and everything. And again, if the town wants to do that, it's fine, but I don't feel like the center should be penalized for that. Like, oh, you need to figure out a different way to make money. Well, it's not my fault you're giving it away either. So if there's gotta be, you know, fair, some fairness there in my opinion. Like, if I can't make revenue off of renters, then they shouldn't, you know. I can't obviously rent. I have people calling me all the timelines for the space. I just had somebody calling last week.
The lease space?
No.
What is this? You, I mean, relatively, did they even know kind of the square footage of that area?
It was about the same. A, a revenue per square foot of the current space to be calculated, so take your revenues. Don't include the hallways, but each gym, workout room and all those rooms, take that, divide it and figure out a per square foot price that you're currently making and that would get us so, step in the right direction and figure out what the space would work.
Do you think that they, you've worked with them more than me. Do you think that they win?
I think it's been more than five years and I think it's time to revisit the contract. And both Middle Park and the communities have the opportunity to evaluate the value of having the, the medical clinic here. And I think that was one of the unknowns, you know, before that was viable. There were an awful lot of people that wanted to know the answer. They felt like a town like Grand Lake. We want to be a year-round town for our, our residents. We should be able to provide the facilities, which started out as limited with the goal of it expanding and it's continued to be limited. So I think it's worthwhile to, to have that conversation, revisit the contract and, you know, have a meeting with Middle Park and the board to have that discussion. And I think some of that is what do you as a board feel the community needs? Not just from a revenue perspective from the space, but if, if that's not going to be a revenue generator, what does the asset provide? You know, is, as Crystal mentioned, you know, what do they, what do the customers want? Who are their customers?
I think a demographics piece from them is important. Who, how many, what was their revenue throughout the year? I know that Holson is always booked.
Mm-hmm.
And there is another Dr. Yeegley and he's typically always booked at the hall unless there's an opening at eight AM. And so I know that to be true personally.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I think it would be important to see their numbers and revenue and.
I hate to see them go, but I'd like to keep them made. Let's just say that.
You're really good, but.
Yeah.
You know, I, I agree. I don't know that has to be a big revenue generator, but I'd like that more hours because I, I go to Dr. Paulson and he's, he's hurt and he's booked. And I asked him, I said, how many customers out of self-safety? I don't know.
We deal with that too with the, you know, renew access and silver sneakers memberships. It, it reduces our ability to make money off of our members because over half of our members are probably in these senior programs where we only get twenty dollars or less for them to kind of facilitate.
Medicare and. But I would really like, I mean, if you get injured right now and you need to go, you can't go there and lock in the door. I mean, they, they don't, you, you have to have, you know, they do physicals. They won't do it. If you fall, a gym fall off his bike and hits his head, he can't go anywhere.
I think that's, I'm probably pretty consistent with many family doctors, especially as they get bigger and corporate. Like, I can't find anyone even in Denver that was taking the patient period. Um, if you want to go somewhere, it's sort of in here. You're, you're paying the emergency surgery for arm side. Um, but I, I do think there's a need for them to be here. I think it's an opportunity for them as well and, and given the need for these doctors, I think maybe if they looked at these numbers or presented it or came up here, I bet they'd find more opportunity to be here than more than two days.
Yes.
I agree. You're Denver. I had a doctor in Denver for twenty-five thousand. He went to Medicare and he's going to get lost. You know, that's my.
Okay. Any more about the medical center from you guys?
Well, I think they'd be open to, um, a percentage of their take.
I, it's probably, they're, they're probably going to stay there losing money, yeah.
That, that would require them to be transparent with the.
Well, and, and they aren't liable for that, so we can, we can ask for that.
Yeah.
Um.
I think as long as we're staying within market rates, I don't care what it is, you know, if it's, if market rate is a hundred dollars, it's not a hundred dollars for them or for anyone else renting.
We'll start with discussion with them and negotiation and see what.
So you're saying there is a possibility that they might be paying something next year for?
No, no, no. I think at this point, it, it will be a future, um, you know, agenda item for staff to look into organizing a meeting with Middle Park and request, um, an update, some of these numbers, revenue information. And then we'll negotiate after that. So, you're on there.
And maybe have them update their website because right now it says they're open five days a week from eight AM to five AM.
That's not on the website.
My brother on the Google listing.
Oh, geez. Yeah, we have crazy people coming with bleeding heads and fishnets in their hand and they always come in when they're not open.
Yeah, I would too, but it says it's open anyway.
I know, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, next time.
What do you think?
Well, the lighting picture.
Of course, the light fixtures is something that we were talking about before and did you ever find out anything yet?
Steve just circulated a spreadsheet that I had the company do. In those nine years, you have come to slam that you didn't have the doctor's office and the, what else did you include? Go through and.
Right.
Stage your.
Yeah.
I went to the whole building.
Right.
And got a quote on bringing everything to LEDs, um, including the medical and storage closet, outside lights. Um, nineteen minute, fifty-nine thousand dollars to do the whole complete job, of which ten thousand dollars was bringing the crew up. I think I can get that down because they're like, I'd go at night. People have to go at night. Most of those rooms, the plantive, the baby rooms, you can do daytime. So, I can get that done. So, that's to do everything. And they were saying.
Yeah, mine was kind of more on the bargaining side because.
That's how I operate.
But they, they figured a calculation of savings, which I think they, they were assuming all the lights in the building, they're moving on to nine hours a day. The half the building with the, the other half isn't for the main rooms and once they're all out, they'll want the vaccination, they won't leave. So they calculated annual savings of like seventy, two hundred dollars, which I think is going to be closer to like five thousand. Ooh, they're going to still work with that, um, turning everything up. You bet. Five grand as well for seventy. Yeah, well, they were saying it was going to be on nine hours a day, but the road would probably, I don't know. You know, when their kids' place is gone for the summer, the, the simulated room's not on nine hours.
Yeah, I also, on the weekends, I, I keep the lights down.
Yeah, this would just.
In the hallway and stuff. People like it.
But we did everything outside, inside, all the.
Yeah, so he, this is a whole revamp. This actually even includes the ones that we already replaced, so. We already have.
Yeah.
We already had two full rooms replaced plus ten hallway lights. So, he, this also includes those rooms. That's, he wanted to redo all of them.
Which, which did you tell them?
You, yeah.
He was.
It includes the roof. We already did it basically.
Yeah, and those fixtures have better savings on, you have a couple of them that have lenses broken on and you can't. These aren't bulbs. These are all diode fixtures, so you can't, you can't buy a lens. I mean, they're by the medical center and you walk in.
Right.
I have to buy a lens to, I have to buy the whole fixtures, so.
So, and what this looks like is that all of the two-by-fourers would convert to flat panels.
Yes.
Um, the eight foot would retoo.
Re, yeah.
The thing just keep the same.
Dimmable lights in the fitness, in the, in the fitness instruction room, thanks.
And all the new flat panels are dimmed. They have three settings so you can dim them.
Oh, cool.
So, um, and a lot of people complained that they were too brightly put in. And then we put, and then that's putting all the controls on there too, so.
Oh, new switches too?
Yeah.
I mean, that sounds like you're going to go to Vidnet regardless, right? So, is that something you want to do now and have bids? Hopefully by the time we want to put a budget together.
That's exactly.
Doing this, but with these numbers, if you have to, so.
But, and, and this kind of helps us work the scope. And I think that that's a part of what this discussion looks like and, um, how to be able to find, to make sure that this goes well. The, the, the first part of the question is, is this an investment? A lot of what we're going to be talking about are dollars that are going to be paid for with town funds and the return is coming over time to the center and the amenity that it is. So these are, these are those big asks and I'm happy to get exact bids. If, if the consensus of the board is not something that you want to look at, then we won't do it.
And, and the reason I look at it this way is because Crystal's been replacing them two Z, one Z, two Z, three Z.
Well, I've only had ten thousand dollars to make a maintenance budget, so I have, you have had, you know, big projects on the table since John, I think, was manager. So it's been several years since any large dollar amounts have been invested into the center. And so we, we're seeing a lot of deterioration, which I warned you guys about as well.
Believe it or not, it's only been one year since John's been here.
Three years, you know, so.
So if we offer multiple bids, which is good, we, we're reduced, there'll be a payback of.
And this helps provide us the scope. Do you think that there's anything else on this list that you think should be included or taken out?
On what list? On bid list? Um.
It doesn't have to be exact, but.
No, I mean, I, I do think we need new exterior building lights. They're horrible. I, you know, I mean, yeah, we need, we need them upgraded. It's important.
Well, we'll get a, and we could do a, where we kept some of those lights and moved those over to the meeting rooms and then put the demo little, more flat panels through.
Oh, so we could still reuse the lights that we have in there and that would save, that would knock some of this off.
So, you know, we could reduce it. I just wanted everyone to see how. We just, if we did it now, what the savings would be on the.
Yeah, thanks for pointing this on.
Crystal, what do you think you have spent on the lights in the last ever two years?
Um, well, Matt was doing them when the two rooms got done and I don't know how much those bills were because I didn't get them. So I don't know how much it cost those two rooms. All I had was the bill from the nine lights being replaced and that was like two thousand. I have to look, but I want to say two thousand seven hundred off the top of my head, maybe a little less, maybe twenty-five hundred. But I want to say solid twenty-seven hundred for nine lights installed, so I just, you know, did that tiny, sorry, lights I had, added a couple of extra installation fees and that's how I came up with my guess.
And you want to look at the controls and everything too, because we kind of, kind of hybrid there. People can flip a switch and turn them on or they're usually sensitive. I don't know if they go back off. I don't know if they're supposed to go back off. Do they?
What?
When they, when they override the sensors with the switches, do they go back off when everyone's gone or do they?
Yeah, they turn off.
Yeah.
So the light switches can be on and they will turn off unless the, uh, it's been disconnected or something. But I think they're all still on in all of them. Our goes off in our office where Katie does ask for more than twenty minutes.
Well, and if you need my help getting this, I'm going to help you.
Thank you, Bob. We do appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to figure out like what exactly you want to give in on this. There's so much. It's overwhelming, you know. Playground is also very important. It's right around our, we actually have two, uh, danger cones out there right now because there's two holes in the squishy material of the playground. Completely disintegrating and Matt keeps trying to fix the hole and it just keeps coming out because he really can't fix it. So it's not really something I want to put money into, but it is, but we have it and we have a day camp and.
Is it something we can put a trash can on?
No, it's right next to, uh, the merry-go-round.
I'm thinking more put it in the trash rather than trash. But do, is it not like a requirement to have that? Can we do wood chips?
Oh, no, we can get rid of it. It's just.
I feel like that's where we need to go at this.
I feel like if there's money in some voco grant, I think Steve was talking about that. I don't know if we have access to that. I don't know if there's anything left for next year. I don't know if we're eligible. Uh, but I, yeah, rip out that stuff because that's maintenance. Um, it's not good for up here.
What I'd like to do is reach out to a couple of playground people and get the recommendations. Um, I, I'm not against any safe surface that's over there. I think the playground equipment still has a lot of good use.
We have great.
And, and especially because it's relatively limited. There, there's the local kids that use it and then the after-school program and the summer camps, all of which are important assets for us.
Yeah, the equipment's not broken. It's mainly the surface that's.
And I, I don't think our conversation earlier in the summer, nobody's tied to that surface. I, I saw a, um, a playground that was just dedicated in Highlands Ranch that got the new surface. One of the things that they talked about is that it allows for tactile, um, movement on the surface for kids with disabilities. And there's hearing things that go along with it too. So usually when you hear that sort of need solution, there's usually money that goes behind it. And part of the conversation is, do we look, again, it's a big list and that's the reason why I wanted you guys to talk about it. From a priorities perspective, you know, do we want to go with, you know, a fancy Highlands Ranch or do we want to get a good, safe surface down there that kids can use for the next ten years?
What else is the Highlands Ranch one? Do you know what you're talking about?
Uh?
I'd have to see the Highlands Ranch one.
It is, I think it's there. It's rubber, yeah, the whole thing. It's, and it had checkerboard.
They set the bar pretty high than being.
Okay.
Is there any money that the rural people can buy or?
They just lost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
See?
I have talked to Elaine and I told her if she saw any grants that she thought, because she's always looking. If you ever see anything that we need to see, she runs out for us, so.
I mean, she'll do it and.
So we, I have to get it. I haven't messed up. We have on our budget thirty thousand dollars to support that. The program that's to her, right?
Yeah. Um. That pays for teachers.
My biggest question is that is if we didn't own the center, would we still? I'm just trying to figure out. That's the problem. I say the thirty thousand dollars. Because it's, it looks like an expense of the center, but to me it's really expensive apparently, you know, but. So it's tech, you know, right now if you look at the center, we're going to lose, you know how I look at things.
Yeah.
We're going to lose two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars on the budget that you gave us. What's that pretty about those? And so I'm just, Steve, should that be an expense for the center or should that be an expense for the?
Oh, you're saying just take it out of our budget?
Well, I'm saying if, if you and I own the center and leased it to them, would you still give us the thirty thousand dollars? And if that answers the question, I would think it is an expense with the center on.
What do you guys think? What's the answer to that question?
Currently it is out of the center's budget.
Yes.
What is that decision?
There are levels.
Yeah.
Thirty thousand dollars for the.
Yeah, personally, I don't really, if we're, it's too much as one, kind of, budget.
Yeah, personally, I don't really, if we're, it's too much as one kind of budget because. I, I don't think that we're gonna. Stop funding that anytime soon. Um, so whether it goes into the general fund or the center. I don't think it makes a big difference. But maybe it's best to keep all of your losses in one spot.
To the Justies, the Justie Miller's point. You know, we. We support the trail groomers. As, as a separate line item. There's also, so we have a discretionary fund that's managed by the Grand Foundation. But there's just a couple of things that we line item. And that, that, and I think part of it, and I don't wanna speak for you. But it sounds like. A little bit of navigation, so instead of. Their budget going to three hundred twenty five thousand. In the hole. If we can do some more investment, but move some big ticket things out. It can still look the same dirty damage, but get some more direct impact to the grand like center. This, this.
In the event of a grant, I would disagree, once they apply for a grant, they wanna see your profit loss. That's actually advantageous to get a grant. To show that you are operating on. Small numbers or loss. That this grant will benefit you, unlike us. As a town as a whole with the. Knowing the dollars of the thing. Depending on how it's being applied for, which budget you're showing, what these things.
Because it's not an enough size. It's still the one. Profit loss unfortunately without, it's different if it were. The Marina or water. Pays you throw. Kind of like what we did with our grant request. Recently. With um HTAs and some winter equipment. It's, it's the towns, you know, that was submitted, not just public.
And part of that, he was, I think five years from now, nobody is currently sitting here, is sitting here. And somebody else can just say, this place is a massive ruin. All this money, what, this, this. This I did not believe. The facts of where it should be part of. This is question.
So we're gonna look at um. ADA pre-fabricated. Wood product, I think is what it, the stuff was called, we can. Go back to looking at what this cost is as well as. What a system cost would be.
So I do have another question for your question. When I look at the building, I see the. This half with the. Workout center and the rowing center and the pickleball court, that we make money off of. Do we make any money at all on the other half?
No, we don't, not really.
The Rotary Club, the Women's Club.
No, but also these places do things for, it's like the Rotary gives us money, um.
I'm just saying, we don't make any rent out of that.
No, we don't, well. We, we do, but not much. Yes, those rooms are rented out. At a very low rate for various meetings and stuff, we're really the only meeting room in all.
Yeah, we might make a couple thousand.
You used to be able to rent the boardroom, you used to be able to rent a room at the fire station, now you can't, so literally we're the only two meeting rooms. But there are events, baby showers, things like that.
So we had the, the golf center, make, make a thousand dollars. So we have the other rooms, you might pay a thousand dollars. Really, we make.
Yes. Yes.
Man, they need to make money, you need to look at the backside and tell. And tell us to put less than people to save for free then, right?
I can, I can't tell you what to do. But we have like uh, we have a couple of major events a year and they do use the double room. We use it for the CDT hivers, I mean, it's used for community fans. You know, and then basically one room gets rented out. Since we tore the wall out, you can't rent the two sides and have two separate meetings at a time, that's been kind of hard, but to buy your wall is ten thousand dollars, I. I gotta vote for that. Um, so we can make it into two rooms again, but I just don't think that like with us charging, you know, twenty dollars to here. Twenty, thirty dollars an hour. And the amount of people looking for meeting space, it's not gonna like increase revenue very much.
Well, and I, and I don't mind if it's a community space that. I don't mind, it's just gonna be robust.
I mean, I don't, any other municipality that provides that service. In their community, I'm speaking unbeknownst, but I don't. Know Granby or Frazier, where Parkout.
Granby just announced plans that they um. Are looking at building a rec center. And they'll try to raise money for it as, as their population increases, that's one of the challenges. That, that we have is just, it's hard to get critical management. In a way that works. We still deserve four hundred and twenty residents.
We can only squeeze so much out of the members, that's what I always say. Oh, and I know I said last time I might increase any rates, but um I, after, we had a meeting with um like pickleball. Teacher and a couple other people who, who play pickleball all over the place and they're like. It's way too low and so I wanna raise the pickleball rate to just match our drop, our regular drop in rate. It's like ten dollars a day unless you wanna give a membership. It just makes people put money, you know. Instead of make, the, the customers neglecting us, you know, it's like either you get a membership or you pay the drop in or punch card fee and. Um, we're lower than anybody else on pickleball, so.
So we allow members who just don't, they, they go play free at the golf course, so they just don't carry any membership at all.
Right, so we're still looking at like, you know, they won't be a member in the summer, but they'll be a member in the winter, but you know. Um, most of them are residents, so it's not, it's not that much, it's like ten dollars, if they go into memberships. They're gonna pay maybe ten dollars more than the people who are paying.
So what's your percentage of the members that are silver sneakers?
I can look it up for you now, but I have people lying, but um, it's a lot, I was, you know, it's, it's more than half, I think it's more than half of our members. Are in these silver sneakers. Senior programs. So. But. These people are also willing to put money into the center and or they can volunteer stuff to help us, like I had Mark McLean install our whole gymnast. System and he did it for free. I, I just, I have, I have people who want to give us money, I, uh, Louis Scherrin gave us two thousand dollars last month. And he would like to give more, but we just don't have anything structured, we don't have anything guaranteed that your money will go to this, so like. All the members want you for me, like I, I see all these things that need to be done and take precedence over that. So it's hard for me to be like, hey, give me seventy thousand dollars for floors, when we have like lighting and crumbling sidewalks and. Things like that that really need to be fixed, um, but if. If you, if we can have like a fundraiser, I don't know if the board is. If you like. Donations, um, Heidi didn't want us to take donations. I don't know if we're not supposed to take donations, I, I don't really know the rule, honestly. Uh, but I feel like these people would pay for a floor, you know, or at least. Like maybe we could match whatever that we can raise, because they, they want it, you know, and since they have the senior programs. They're willing to put money into it. Because they're not paying for a membership, so they, they give to us in ways. Where even though we're not making money off memberships, they're willing to put into the community.
Why don't we return down one street?
I'm sure Heidi had a video other than just saying, no, she didn't want.
The concept. The concept of quick pro. That, I, I mean, when they come, we've put ten thousand dollars into this floor. And now you're telling me we can't use it because you're getting three hundred dollars for a kids in there. Those are, those are the concerns.
I mean, so do people donate into the understanding that the use for the. Space would continue as it is.
No, we, yeah, we've, we've often felt that. That. There would be a way for us to be able to create. Some sort of a managed. You know, a way to be able to accept that. And it is um.
Maybe a beret off?
Yeah, see, Megan walking in the door, it's, it's, it's a need for a nonprofit foundation that benefits the town. We are, we are talking about funding in the Grand Lake Center and budgeting and they asked a question that we have. Members, people that come and go that want to give us money to help us put a new floor. So we're talking about the pluses and minuses of taking other people's money. And what that responsibility comes out of them start, so. But if you wanted to go in that direction, Megan would have that conversation with us, how to create that.
I just feel like in other towns, like literally they get whole rec centers because somebody has a multimillion dollar donor and I'm like, why not kind of like? I mean, really, like, people want the center, you know. People would be so heartbroken if it ever were to not be there.
Yeah, people also wanna start that conversation and, and you know, figure out the best way to go about this, maybe, you know. Outline a program, I know my gym in my hometown ages ago, we had plaques for everyone that donated. And they were hung up on the wall and similar to the Rocky Mountain Theater Theater, there was, you know, they had.
Was that private though, or were you saying that was a municipal? Facility?
My, the gym? I don't know, it was a center block building that had pool.
I just, yeah, there's, you know, it's like Middle Park Health is foot raising money for that Kremlin gym and they raise a bit of money, but that's not. A tax funded entity. So I, yeah, there are differences.
We can look into the viability of that and I think one of the important things I. I'd like to see what's possible, the, but. You know, we're talking about number five on this list. For Crystal, number four. Is important.
Well, no, I moved that because he wanted me to add it, because he said you guys are looking at grants.
And, and but.
We do need windows.
But some of that discussion is that when you take. That money. We should frame it in such ways, some of that could be going because we need windows too. The gym floor is not getting any good if it's twenty below zero.
I did want her to add, I've had some of the windows lately, you can totally.
So, I mean, these are, these are discussions and directions that I welcome you guys wanting us. You know, if, if you want us to put our money towards. That funding, the other question is how much are you willing? And you wanna prioritize these items that if we get a fifty fifty match. Are you willing to budget that fifty percent next year? If there's a way around that.
I think funding. For repairs and maintenance and improvements on building and space is a huge component. To adding the cementing and adding value for the community through the space. But. I. I think there's also gotta be more. Initiative behind these, I think we're open to a lot of these, I think we all deeply want the center and the opportunity within it. To be all it can be. Not trying to make fun there with the. We're presented with a lot of problems with the center.
I know.
And it was, it was. Exchange purchase, whatever. With the idea was an opportunity, but I think there is a lot of opportunity with the center. Um, so these things, setting up a, a, a donation plan, program, um, for funding all of these or some of these and. And setting up smaller programs and, and adding other amenities and making that is, is kind of what we wanna see, we're in. I think everyone here is of full support. I think we're just looking for some initiative on the fifty fifty other than just monetary, I think, I think if you. Provide us with a plan, I think we'll back them, you know what I mean?
My question to the board. Would be and, and maybe direction for staff is, it's my time. On the board. The Grand Lake Center has always kind of been. Since I used to be trying to really run it stepchild.
Thank you. The forgotten ones.
I know.
And conjunction with that and not to take away from this. Arrow Labs doesn't come to us with. We need this and we need that, Arrow Labs comes to us with, we provided this and look at what we're doing and we're providing these things. And, and. That's why I'm gonna be giving more to and providing more resources to. If it's just the center's falling down, we need help and we need this and we need that. Yeah. Everything does.
So.
The town's building.
My, the town's, the town's building and we've had these discussions for a long time now and my question to the board. Is this a subject that we need to dive into deeper? For what is the long term goals for the Grand Lake Center? Really diving into what do we want this facility to be? Do we want housing on top? Do we want the Middle Park Medical to grow, do we want Arrow Labs to have more of a. Significant state, we can add on, I think there needs to be a lot of discussion. As to what the long term, term possibilities are. So that we know the money that we're putting into this facility, we can better. Justify it. For ourselves with the budget, but also to the general public and then showing them the long term plan of donate. Be a donor, because this is our long term goal. So I'm wondering, you know, that puts. The totally changing the. Scope of conversation here, but it's also something that I've been running this Grand Lake Center, I mean. It's like a broken record for five years. And. I, I really am thinking that it might be time to just go a little. Deeper and come up with a bigger.
One of the things that I find a little frustrating is that I just feel like, oh yeah, we'll spend a hundred thousand dollars on this new project, oh yeah, we'll buy it. You know, public works, these fabulous machines and all this, oh, the center.
Well, and I hear you and you talk.
We want, we don't wanna fix it, but we gotta work.
But the Grand Lake Center is that difficult piece. And we can justify the public works for the snow and you know, all the things that that is, but I'd like to be able to justify the money for the Grand Lake Center. To your point, and I think the way to do it is to have. You know, a real conversation about what the long term pieces.
I completely agree and to add more confusion to it. Manager allowed me to have a preliminary look at the top, so I took up um. Scott and Big Ben and Katie. Um, and we can push. Well, one bedroom. Park us on top. And I think, you know, I think Steve's looking around to see if there is grants out there to do it. But if you took like fifteen hundred dollars of. Unit tents, twelve hundred minutes. It shores up a lot of the deficit and the mess and revenue.
Well, then if we're, you know, in agreement on this, then maybe that's a piece that we need to. You know, kind of dive into, is a little bit deeper, I mean, we'll probably not have that concept in the full discussion in time for budget season. But if we know we're working towards it and we have some idea of what we could be looking at, I think it'll help us. Even.
We had um. We received a bit of forty six thousand to do a feasibility. Study, we can look for money. To do that.
And then again, you have forty seven thousand for feasibility, is this set aside in a budget or?
Just always true, so we got to go up there and listen to people look at it and they came back and said, the forty six thousand, I can tell you. What, what can be done?
We need a structural, we had a.
We need to have the same grant that we did for the Mary Drive.
I can go chat. So I agree that uh, there should be a long term goal for the. Center, but everything I'm looking at on here, or most of what I'm looking at on here. Is deeper maintenance that really needs to be taken care of. No matter what your long term goal is. And something for y'all to consider and I think I'm getting good direction and you and I will be able to work on our list. That. I, I am gonna recommend some of the floor, I think the gymnasium and fitness studio. And I'm, I'm gonna take that from an argument that that's what's making the money right now at the center. So one of the first things you guys have to do is to show your patrons that you're at least taking care of the maintenance of their stuff. And then we need to show them how we're gonna set aside some money to take care of those long term maintenance costs. And give you guys a five year plan on fixing windows. The concrete and those sorts of things, I think that's what you're looking for is. Tell us what you need, prioritize it.
Yeah.
And, and, and show us what that means.
I like that.
And I, I do. I do wanna touch on your comment about uh, the public works. I do wanna touch on your comment about, uh, the public works and, and getting some items funded by us through them. There's a, there's a big difference of, of how things are presented. Uh, and I asked, I asked a question last time you were here, um, with the maintenance and improvement budget about what you would do. With that money and you couldn't give a very specific answer. And one thing that is typically brought to us whenever someone is asking for money or asking for investments or asking for support. Is they're not presenting, hi, we have really old windows or hi, our flooring is out. They're saying our flooring is out. This is how old it is. These are some pictures and examples of, of the condition of it. Here's some alternatives. This is my recommendation. This is why. And this is what I need from you in order to deliver that. Do you see value in this and can you support me?
And we're gonna.
We don't get that from any of these.
We're gonna provide that for you.
And I think that's what I, I would like to see. I would like an understanding more, especially when it's, uh, we're talking about Middle Park Health. Um, and, and they need to pay. I totally agree. I, I think they should be paying. Um, but maybe just providing something, a sense of, I've looked at a couple other places that are similar in size and talent and they're going for a thousand dollars a month. Um, this is what I think and this is how much we could make and this is what we could do with that. Like just a couple things that, that help us. Help in understanding not only what you need, but how we can help support that in the best way. And I think this. Um, donation path, maybe part of the grand foundation would be a, a great opportunity for the center. To not only get some of these things checked off the list, but also get people more involved and make, make them feel like they're part of the community in a sense.
Let's see, can we, I passed, I signed, can we use some of the interest on ground? Touch up to you.
Sure.
If you buzzing a hundred thousand dollars of interest in front, which is really earmarked for anything, is that right?
Correct.
I just wanna say too, so the difference is we've been actually, the center is at that. We're at this transition point, right? Town bought this building that was falling down, that was literally given up by the school board because it was so almost condemned. And we took it on and then have done, I mean, this is ten years worth of deferred maintenance. It's not like. Oh, I just need a new tractor. It's like Crystal said, it's very overwhelming because. There's, I just, I mean, on a rough count, there's two hundred and fifty grand of projects that need to be done yesterday. In the last five years and it hasn't been done. And it's like we put our finger in one hole and water comes out another. And it's not our business. We're not a nonprofit like Arrow Lab. This is the town, this is your building. It's not our building. We don't, if you guys don't wanna fix the floors, fine. Like if you don't wanna do the things, fine. It's just that it's like ten years of stuff that is deferred and what I've been asking for personally for four, at least four years. Coming to this board twice a year, saying we need a ten year strategic plan for the center. It's not in the comp plan. There's comp plan for the whole town. It doesn't mention the center. Like, why, why is that? Doesn't make any sense. So like the center needs a strategic plan. Yes, of course, it's great to get the windows and let's get a grant, let's do the playground, sure, but it's like. Knee jerk, knee jerk, knee jerk. I would, I mean, personally, it would help us run the place better if we had. An actual strategy behind it. And it's like, okay, we're gonna put fifty grand every year into a big project. This year we're doing windows, next year we're doing floors, this year we're doing playground. But like, every year we come here and it's like, oh, sure, do this, or maybe do this, or we don't know what to do with it. We don't know what to do with it. Like, well, we really also don't know where to start. We don't know. It's not, I mean, what do you guys wanna do with it, you know? So for this budget already, it's like, there's two hundred thousand dollars of the projects on that list. Like, which one do we do? Do you want us to get grants for all of them? Like. We've never been directed to do that either. So like, where do you want us to start, you know?
I agree. I think there needs to be a clear plan for it and for anything. I was strictly talking about. When public works come in, comes in and asks for money for a snow blower or a snow power or something, this is how these present the answer, is how we get a decision on it.
We're asking for money for windows, a playground and new equipment, you know, I mean, but it's like. We, we can just pick one of our.
That's the way I'm presenting it to you, but it's, I'm gonna interrupt everybody.
You could like gym day first, first, but, um.
This, this is a, a heated, I feel the tension and I, I don't want that between. You ladies and, and the board. There's a couple different things and I think it would be advantageous for Trustee Kusso and I and. Manager Pudron to have more of this discussion at a later time. You're exactly right. This, this, like I was saying, this has been the blonde headed stepchild for. Um, years and they have been directed to do the budget just like they did today. As always, if that's something that we need to change as a board, then we will direct staff to direct them. That's not our job. This, this part of the conversation is not in our purview as a board. So even suggesting to them that they take the approach that public works does is not our job. It's more at this juncture, you would have the freedom to have that conversation with Steve. Outside of this, there's that fine line that we have to be careful of when it comes to directing them. And so I just wanna kind of end that piece of it right now. You guys have done exactly everything that you've been asked to do and if we feel we need to change that. We will do so, um, through management.
Perfect, thank you.
For this board, I, I hope it highlights. What our staff does on a daily basis in, at the Grand Lake Center that. We need a plan and without one, we continue to operate reactively and it's a lot of money. Um, it has turned into a great asset for the community. I think that's one of the difficult things is how do you measure it? Because depending upon how often we use it, it has some changes, but a lot of people go through those doors. And I, I will make sure that we start to expand this need. Into a solution driven discussion. Because I do recognize it's, it's time for us to stop, keep talking about the problems. Pulling one or two reactive solutions out to say we did something to keep it going. And, and then we do it again.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else that, I mean, obviously there's more on here and we have time, so where, what should we move on to?
A little second page.
If, if there's anything, I mean, obviously we can read all this, we know what's.
Ask what number six is, it says cardio room, weight room, golf room.
Oh, those are optional for flooring. We don't, that really happens. But they're just, I piece them separate because we don't have to do those, right? I mean, I feel like if you're gonna do flooring, the gym first. We'll look at the other rooms in the future.
And they reach twelve thousand for a move that lies at, to be able to change the floors.
Uh, also, I, we talked about the golf simulator and we thought we'd like. Keep it through the winter since it's an indoor thing and then maybe put a for sale sign on it, if you guys wanna, if you guys were serious about that. I did mention it to somebody, he's like, what? You know what I'm saying? So it's not impossible, it won't be, couldn't be sold, you know? Uh, but also we have people in annual memberships right now and so I'd like to keep it through the winter and then since, especially since we don't have like a solid plan. Uh, with money to put equipment in and all the things, you know? So, and then maybe we can sell the simulator, you know, to help generate screen. Income for the fitness equipment that we want to put in there.
Should it get a lot of use last year, Lauren?
Towards the spring, you know, the people before they can get outside.
Does it make more sense then to just sell it now in case like someone drives a?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying. We can put it for sale and also keep it open, you know, and then if it sells, it's gone, you know?
You want that notice that people that are wanting that, know that it's X months, six months, that this will be gone, that. All of a sudden.
Yeah.
The question is.
Yes.
Yes, is after our previous meeting with, um.
Yeah.
We asked them if they wanna buy it back.
Yep, not an option.
Do we both need to gain some agreements?
Yep, they helped us purchase and, and as a result for, and then I think it's three years.
Plus, plus, so what I want on it, I had to buy a new sensor to read the ball, it's five hundred dollars for that.
We have not, we have not, we have not, for sure, and quite a year, we have first for the thousands of.
If it breaks again, I'm not fixing it, if, if, if we're gonna get rid of it, you know, right? Yeah, one hundred times.
I'm hurting his feelings.
What'd you do with that? What are you gonna do with that room?
Uh, expand the weight room, which is what all the people have been asking for. We can get rid of that area.
No, but that word is now still.
Whole room in the, of the middle part is, I'm thinking of a whole extra room.
Yeah, it looks really nice. It's kind of sad to go, but it doesn't get used very much, you know?
I think looking into the sale, that would probably be financially in our best interest in case something major did break. Somebody's willing to pay for it now, then I'd like to take that and get work towards, um. Even making that room, I mean, there's obviously budget, but. Figuring out what that room would need before we move anything else into it, let's get that room. Substantially remodeled possibly and then, okay, we'll, we'll keep that open, but.
I mean, if it's sold tomorrow, we would literally just take the equipment we have now. And spread it into there with no, we don't have to change anything and people would just be happy that they have more space.
Perfect.
Like that's what the members ask us for all the time.
More space.
Like, we don't have to paint or do anything.
Well, purely is worked out before, you know, we get that tighter for people in that weight room is. That's.
Is this tidy or?
Yeah.
I don't know if they were sold.
Every now and then.
How much can it sell for?
I have no idea.
Does that man know what's work?
When we looked when they were here the last time, you know, it was two, had, had two, three, you know, racks, but.
I threw out six to this guy and he's like, what? So, huh, not, we, like, not be surprised or? No, not be surprised, like, who thinks we don't spend, you know?
Fourteen, fifteen thousand.
That's what we.
We bought.
Yeah, so I mean, if we sell it for, I, I was looking online, used ones are going from two to seven.
Okay.
Just adding a lot.
Do whatever you can for necessary value.
Right.
Well, and it hasn't been used.
No, I think, it didn't get used this weekend. And I told them we were getting rid of it and they're like, no, and I'm like, well, you know, not every day.
Basketball hoops were in place when, when Michael played on them in fourth grade.
Oh, they scare me. I'm afraid one day we're gonna wheel them up and they're gonna break and fall off the ceiling.
Do we wanna look into that for this year?
We could use.
Oh, all time. If the basketballers did not have pickleballers in there, they'd be ecstatic. People fight over the gym.
We have little defense five or twenty five.
I think we should do it now on balls and stuff.
I mean, based upon how many times they've been hitting and being kept down.
Right.
We don't have Shaq when you ask him. We have some that wanna read. Thank you. Um, Sundays, I'm, I'm gonna skip some of the first period number two, we're still doing.
I'm always torn about Sundays because I was just there on Sunday and I was so busy, you know, it's like. I just know people drop the door open if we're not there. Doors get left open and it's unattended and then kids run wild and it's, it's so hard, just like every other department, right? You either eat it or you don't, you know? It's tough. But we may be able to go limited hours at least, like age twelve.
I mean, I feel like again, this comes down to where it's like, okay, here's a list of five choices. Do we, okay, one, do we wanna close on Sundays or not? Well, that is a choice that should be run through the filter that comes out of a comp plan or like a strategic plan. Cause is the goal overall for the center to close the gap? Is it to like cut this two hundred grand and be maybe not completely self sufficient, but at least not losing money every year? If that's the goal. Then it's move my salary to town hall, close on Sundays, do not hire a cleaner. We sell as much as we can. I mean, those are the types of decisions or is it to be a service to the community, in which case. We're going to find a way to invest in pores, even if it costs money. We're going to find a way to clean better. We're going to stay open seven days a week because then we're available to walk-ins and to answering questions like where is the lake? And things like this, you know? So I mean, that's kind of the question. It's like, is it, is this just like a financial decision or is it? You know, we've always been told this is a community service. Don't worry about the money. This is a community service. That is what we have been told for years. So that's where it's like, these little decisions become much more clear when we can run it through. What is the overall goal? And that's what's really tricky when we come up with these questions, like what to do with the golf simulator, what to do with Sundays, what to do with, do we hire a part time person or not? Well, let's look at the comp plan. What's the strategy behind this? Are we saving money by this decision or are we improving this amenity for people at this decision? And that's, I would love that to be answered. Like what is the ultimate goal here? So, I mean, originally, I was hired originally because we wanted it to be open seven days a week. And then we wanted the golf simulator because we wanted this to be an added amenity. And we took the wall out because of the meetings, because we wanted to have, be able to sell bigger meetings. Well, now we're saying. We don't wanna do meetings and I get things change, it's been ten years and this is that decision point. We don't want the golf simulator, we don't wanna be open Sundays and it's like, we're just going ping pong, ping pong. And it's just, it's not efficient and it's, yeah, it's just time to, I understand the first ten years of being open was like experimental. What is this gonna be? It's gonna be a fitness center, it's gonna be a rec, it's gonna be a meeting, conference center. We have a whole branding book, make the center. Conference center, you know, go to Denver, go to trade shows and, uh, sell this to weddings and stuff. It's like. Now we're, uh, now some people want to be a school, like, or an apartment building, like, what's, what is going on?
So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna address that.
Right, so I'm just saying now that it's that ten years of experimenting has happened, we've trialed there a lot of things. And we're working with, you know, X number of dollars, like now it's really.
Kind of settled to what it is.
Like.
We have a, a, our community clinic and plus we offer camps to our community.
Right.
There's really not a lot of room for more.
Or a tail ball center.
Okay.
So that's where it's like.
We're successful in what it is, but because of some of the dynamics of it, we don't make money from those things.
And then maybe that's not even the goal. Is the goal even to make the money to close the gap? Like, maybe it's not. I don't know. That's what's.
Okay, we're gonna work on that.
All of these things.
A couple more of these. So we don't miss anything that really wants to be discussed.
Okay, so, security was successful. I'm gonna recommend that we put it in as a security line item.
I think we only needed, uh, right when you get out of school to.
I was just, I was just thinking, I don't know that we need it in the winter. It's really like, the summer is when we have the biggest issues and that was great to have it in the summer.
I really feel like it cut kids out.
I'm not sure.
Um, breaking in, um, he escorted people out if he come in there after midnight. Um, that happened a couple of times and then he would basically close everything up because people leave things open. But I go around, close everything at five, you got members coming in there, being five and eleven, they leave windows open. They leave, they, they leave that open.
And, and the gym has, we do have a software fees and other budget line.
Yeah, there's some restructuring, um, so it's easier for me to know where to put things in my budget because like. I've been putting it under operations supplies. It's not really a supply. Um, so we have a lot of services, like perfect cleaning and stuff like that. I feel like I need my head in third.
Last year you had a part time guy from Public Works, Matt, and Crystal and Katie had another productive conversation today, so we're working.
No, that's not gonna happen this year, but we're working.
Um, Matt and Crystal and Katie had another productive conversation today, so we're working.
Well, right now the agreement is that he's just doing, he's coming to pick up the trash that we collect in the morning, every morning and he'll take care of mopping the floors. So we still are doing okay.
I've been here with you as a, a personnel line for, you're not gonna give me a month.
Come see me tomorrow, I have some.
No, we could offer discounted memberships for janitorial volunteer trade, a work trade.
Okay. I think we're good. Thank you.
Oh, very much.
For determining kind of funding, we get a list of what you as the manager would like to see in order, this is. When item number one that should be replaced to, and then possibly one for members. That, Steve, like you said, we gotta piece the members first, we said before, so. Something like that, let's, it's gonna be a piece, I have some.
Well, there's stretching. Well, there's stretching, maintenance, that's, they can't appear building, maintenance and, yeah, what it costs to keep it going.
Yeah.
And then the other side is what, what does member return and what are those amenities that they look?
And then the comp plan, the town did, was a survey of the town, so obviously this, probably can also surgery to the number of the town or, wherever we determine will be surveyed, that's step one in the comp plan, so along with your needs as well.
Okay. It's my nine-year anniversary, I was fifteen. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
I love working for the town. Okay, um, at this time, I'm gonna take a brief recess, page into our regular meeting at six o'clock tonight. Good evening. It is, uh, six oh two on September eighth. Thank you, all of you that are here at Town Hall and then also those on video. I'd like to call this regular meeting, keep it on Grand Lake or trustees. Pledge allegiance. Thank you. Um, under announcements, I've always told everybody to turn your phones off and other devices at this time, but one of the things I've been informed about is with our new speaker system, any conversation you're having over there comes up on the recording. And it's making it difficult, um, for people that are online and Elena, and she does the notes to here if people in the audience are talking, and also know that what you're saying is in Cambieburg. So, watch your conversation in this meeting. If you need to have some, please take it outside. Um, recordings are available within the next twenty-four hours. And I don't believe I have anything else. So, under, um, roll call, all of our trustees are here. We'll move on to conflicts of interest. We'll refer for Sarah, please.
Trustee Miller.
No conflicts.
Trustee Shonan.
No conflict.
Trustee Mill.
No conflict.
Trustee Arnstein.
No conflicts.
Trustee Sal, no conflict, Mayor Tom Solvan.
No conflict.
Mayor Verfus.
Okay, please. Um, next we have the managers report, name Jakuda.
Thank you very much. Mayor, trustees. Couple weekends ago, we were eighty corvettes, the Senate on Grand Lake. A car showed the event for bets. The clubs were pleased with the town's hospitality and reported more than thirty-five of the registrants. They spent the weekend and many enjoyed our stores and restaurants. Just as an aside, it seems like there's more corvettes driving into town the past couple. Through the raffle, the club would ever raise twenty-eight hundred for Grand County Pet Pals, and Grand County Pet Pals also raised another three hundred and fifty dollars during the event. The towns received a waiver of building fees for space to create Grand Lake from Grand County, thanks to the Grand County Board of Commissioners for their generous waiver of the fees. Tomorrow night, the Three Lakes Water and Sanitation District will be reviewing a variance request for us to streamline the taps. We've also been allowed to transfer ten of the taps purchased with Mary Drive property. The transfer will save the town eighty thousand dollars in fees, and the town won't be charged a service fee on those taps until the connection is complete or twelve months, whichever comes first. Darks one U V chargers have finally been repaired, um, although out of service for more than forty days. Um, we're now starting to generate revenues from that, and we'll be coming to you with an analysis of what that program has cost and generated for the town, and we're gonna look at rates this coming fall. Congrats to Matt Reifeldin for passing his certified playground inspector from the National Recreation and Parks Association. That's among a small number of those taking the test to pass about this personal tabs. Congratulations to Matt. Um, this means that he knows what to look for when there are bolts and things that could snag and potentially risk the town liability. Stage two fire restrictions continue at the recent Board of County Commissioners meeting. They issued stage two fire restrictions. Um, the, the counties had also moved to a higher level of drought. Even though it's been wet, um, over the past couple of days, it's not near enough water. More information can be found at the link in my report. Space of Great Ribbon Cutting is Saturday the thirteenth at three P M. It'll be downtown at the site, um, I hope all of the trustees can make it. You all have gold shovels to stick your hand in the dirt with. Um, so it should be a lot of fun. We're getting great response. I'll be interviewed on Fox News tomorrow morning, and last week we did a story run on Nine News. Follower of Grand Lunch Stop will be here tomorrow from eleven o'clock to one. Paradise Paradox and the discussion at Shadow Cliff at six P M tomorrow night. And then the next day, the first annual Shadow Cliff Social, co-sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, is from four to three. Space to Create Groundbreaking is three on Saturday, and then, as always, Grand Lake Annual Constitution Week starts next Monday. Any question for me, Lord?
Uh, next is public comments. This is a time for unscheduled comments. This time is reserved for members of the public to make a presentation to the board on any items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda. The board will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the board make any decisions on these items. At this time, rather, the board will refer these items to staff for follow-up. If a member wishes to make comments regarding items of the decisions by the board of trustees, time will be allocated at the beginning of each non quasi judicial item. For items of a quasi judicial nature, time will be allocated during public hearing conducted for this time. If you'll please notice the clock above, please be mindful of the three minutes of time given to each, uh, individual comment. Really appreciate this. Um, just to reiterate really quick, since we've had several come in since before we started the meeting, we're, um, sound issues that we have, just so you know, everything that you say over there amongst each other is being heard on the recordings. Um, a lot more sensitive than we realized, so if you can keep your conversations, um, nonexistent, or outside of the. Okay, um, if anyone would like to speak, come up to the front, state your name and address for the record. Please, I'm on that.
My name is Tom King, and my address is three nine seven, and we're for you. My wife and I purchased a house in December of twenty twenty-one, um, at that address. Uh, we're technically three houses outside of town limits, uh, but I'm here to talk about the Howard Dish and the associated water risk. Um, currently use the house in Grand Lake as a short-term rental, and until we can afford not to, um, we're also gonna go on retirement there. The house has a small pond that's seasonally by the Howard Dish, and we stock the pond before different types of trout. On occasions when we get to enjoy the house, our kids love fishing pond. Additionally, we've watched wildlife, use the water source improving moose, deer, male ducks, and marten. According to previous owner, uh, the Howard Dish has run two year and flowed, uh, through the pond, and then proximal memorial links a lake per day. Um, that was our experience until this year, and we did not flood. Um, without water, the pond is shrinking, and the times have reached the upper limit of survivable temperatures for trout. Um, and it seems, and talking to the water commissioner and others, um, that without, uh, obtaining water rights in some regard, um, we will have to fill the pond in, um. We're hoping to obtain, uh, water rights in one way or another, whether that's purchase or lease. Um, and I know that I'm grasping at straws, um, but we'd really love to find a solution that would allow our pond, fish, wildlife, and join the, that to continue, um, and if the town has any access to water, um, we would greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak more about purchasing or leasing, um, some of those water rates. Um, and when I say a small amount, uh, based on my rough calculations, I think we would need about one tenth of one percent of what the water rates were that were required in the standard property purchase. Um, the water would also not be truly used after it would continue flowing through the leaner pond and continue that streaming to other wetlands and, um, I'm not sure what else, or other, other people's ponds perhaps. Um, and then also, um, one other, um, comment about it is that during our wildfire assessment, um, uh, mitigation specialist Sam Bailey did mention that the pond, um, could serve a purpose in fighting fires, uh, not just us, but our neighbors as well. Um, so, thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Moving on to the consent agenda. This is where the board considers tasks that are of a regular nature for record-keeping purposes. The board member wishes to consider these items individually. It's appropriate to do so. You chance to look it over? Questions, and then I'll entertain action.
Have a question, Mr. Manager?
Yep.
Can you explain the sewer tap one more time, see if the gentleman is still super.
You bet. Um, before the variance could be heard by Three Lakes Water and Sanitation, all fees and requests have to be made. So, it has been determined by Three Lakes Water and Sanitation District that the tab requires ten point three three taps. The point three three tap cannot be cut up, so that, um, that is a cost of thirty-four thousand, thirty-five dollars. Um, that's seven hundred and fifty dollar variance request fee and a one hundred dollar, um, fee for the inspection of the sewer once it's put in. As to the taps, the cost of each tap is eleven thousand dollars. So, to the space to create project, it would be an additional cost of a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. When we purchased for three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, the Mary Drive property, it included sixteen taps. Those sixteen prepaid taps of which we have transferred two and a half S F B to the Grand Lake Center, because we found out that an elementary school uses less S F Bs than our current Grand Lake Center has confirmed us. So, for savings to the town of eighty thousand dollars, because we, we are required to pay a thirty tap or a three thousand dollar transfer fee per. So, the thirty-four thousand dollars is the total cost of all of those fees, including the transfer of all of the taps. So, for thirty-four thousand that, we have ten point three three taps at Space to Create.
Good questions.
And the M A Studios bill that go back toward there?
Correct. A portion of it does, because that is, that's vertical. Their schematic design did all the horizontal and the vertical, so the vertical then goes against the vertical costs that are supported by the C C I three million dollar.
Not hearing anything else? Should I wait or? May I ask for a motion?
Move to early consent agenda. It is September eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Have a motion? Okay, move a second. Please pull the board.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Arnstein.
Aye.
Trustee Shonan.
Aye.
Trustee So.
Aye. Mayor Tom Solvan or Mayor Verfus?
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have items for discussion. We have four this evening, and we'll start with Grand Foundation Special Event, nineteen fifteen, or, I'm sorry.
Hi, Megan's here too, but I'm Amy Hoover with Grand Foundation, and it's for the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight. So, on behalf of the Grand Foundation, we are respectfully requesting a waiver of site fees for Hickert Pavilion and the Community House for an event we're co-hosting with, uh, philanthropy Colorado next Thursday, September eighteenth. Uh, the event is the Colorado Rural Funders Learning Network, and the event will bring statewide philanthropic leaders to Grand Lake to learn more about community needs, strengths, and priorities. So far, we have registrants that are representatives from the Buell Foundation, El Pumar Foundation, Betcher, Ann Schute's Family Foundation, Colorado Health Foundation, Colorado Trust, and Rocky Mountain Health Foundation. Um, during our time in Grand Lake, uh, we are focusing on a couple of different areas. Uh, one is Grand Lake Arts and Communities, so the funders will tour the Repertory Theater, uh, walk past the housing project that they, um, uh, did so successfully. And then in addition, we'll ho- host lunch at the Hickert Pavilion with, um, a talk highlighting the Grand Lake Creative District Space to Create. Then we plan to move to the Community House, will, where we will be covering, uh, five years of recovery and resilience after the East Troublesome Fire, and that's gonna feature, um, speakers, including Chief Saint Germain, Chief White, and Jessica Ron with Grand County Wildfire Council. Uh, these sessions are designed to foster connections between funders and local organizations, building relationships that can lead to new funding partnerships benefiting Grand Lake. Uh, so, we request the waiver of facility fees to allow us to allocate funding to other expenses, such as the lunches we're, um, providing for participants from Sagebrush, transportation from the, for the funders to get to Grand Lake. And you guys are all invited, uh, to attend that day, uh, those sessions on the eighteenth. We will happily let funders know that the town of Grand Lake is a generous partner in making the convening possible. Thanks for your consideration. Or questions for? Anything for you?
Thank you for considering Grand Lake for this event. We greatly appreciate it.
Don't hear any questions, we'll maintain action.
We're. I'm going to refer a resolution forty, twenty, twenty-five, a resolution setting certain fees for the Foundation's special event, Colorado World Funders Learning Network on September eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Have a motion?
The eighteenth was the eighteen.
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth is definitely eight, I'm here, so I apologize. On September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion?
Sure.
Move a second. Please pull the board.
Well, that may address.
Trustee Shonan.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Arnson.
Aye.
Mayor Tom Solvan.
Aye.
Mayor Verfus.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, next we have positive judicial public hearing for the property located at nine hundred Grand Ave. Metro Pudron or?
All right, I can take that. Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you, Emily.
Perfect. Let me share my screen. Perfect. Let me share my screen. Okay. Is everyone seeing the screen?
No, we're getting that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So, tonight we have resolution thirty-six dash twenty twenty-five on the agenda. The site in question is nine hundred Grand Avenue. Here is an overview of the site. Again, it's located at nine hundred Grand Ave and is on the corner of Grand and Ellsworth. The zoning for the site is commercial, and the proposed use for the site is mixed use. The applicant is proposing a commercial unit on the ground floor, which is proposed to be a tap house, two residential units, one on the second story, one on the third, and then an outdoor patio space to complement the commercial use. Just an overview of the process. This is a minor development application. So, a minor development application goes through the preliminary and final review. So, this is a two-step process. Tonight, we are still considering the preliminary development application. So, at when this process is finished, then the applicant will have to go through the final development application. This will require review by referral agencies, and then review by the planning commission and the board. This application has been reviewed by the planning commission and the board. It was reviewed by the board on the August twenty-fifth meeting and was continued to tonight with the request to bring back supplemental materials and information for the board to consider. Here is on the left side of the screen, just a rendering of the layout of the building. You can see that the building is set back from Grand Avenue with the open space patio use in the front, and then some parking in the back half of the site adjacent to the alley. So, at the August twenty-fifth meeting, the board requested more materials from the applicant on how they would be able to meet specific code requirements, specifically with concerns to the materials being used for the project, and then the step-back and massing requirements per town code. So, on the left side of the screen, you can see the previous submittal, and on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the updated submittal that the applicant did provide. So, they did remove any or metal as the primary material. It is still being proposed as an accent material. However, that is permitted by code. They also stepped backed the third story from the Ellsworth side, and then also from the Grand Avenue side. So, they, they modified this gable element, the bump out, creating the step-back and changed some of the materials. Here are the two D renderings. So, you have the side elevation. Again, this is from Ellsworth Street, and then the front elevation as well. And just another three D rendering. So, because these were supplemental materials, we did review in regards to the zoning regulations, and everything pretty much stays the same. So, I'm not going through that in my presentation, but I'm happy to go or answer any questions at the end in regards to the zoning regulations. These do not include engineered plans, so those will be required at time of final application submittal. However, due to the quick turnaround and request of this, staff found that the materials provided did provide clarity that the board was looking for. And so, with that, I open it up for discussion from the board. We are looking for a recommendation to either approve, deny, or continue the application. The applicant is in the audience and is able to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Emily. This is a quasi-judicial item. So, any questions that you have right now, or Emily, we'll go ahead. What would it be better to have?
Yeah, I can speak first, and then you.
Okay. We'll have you guys come on up and speak. We'll ask questions during that. Yeah, please, everything.
Haley Wallison and Will Wallison at two zero one one County five in Frazier, Colorado. We do not have an updated presentation. We only went through the changes that we did make. I just wanted to reiterate that, through the planning commission's feedback, we did make those updated that they recommend conditionally. So, the step-back is not going to address preservation. The proposed primary exterior material, which is supposed to be a seater lap siding versus that metal that we had originally wanted to have a conversation about. And the gable roof feature on the Ellsworth side, we went forward with that design element. A few other things that we did, just based on compensation that we heard, were removed along the stone from that front facade. I know that that didn't seem to be a preferred material, so that is now just in a winged coating application on the bottom kind of perimeter of the building. We have reduced metal, again, to be just an accent material. We've removed all corrugated metal entirely, as I know that was not a preferred material as well. And yeah, Emily already touched on this, but we made that gable element. We actually made it a much more apparent feature on the front of the building.
Thank you. We'll open it up to public comment at this time. Anyone that would like to come up and speak? Janine, what else?
Oh, yeah, Alexander Thompson, by the way, parents. I saw the last presentation that everyone made, and the planning commission had a conversation at the board level. I just wanted to say that I, looking at the new designs, I hope you all feel really good about it. I feel like all the changes in my mind, as someone who's seen the previous application and also lives quite close by, and is excited about the project coming to town, I feel like that changes all seem to be made in really good faith. I, the building itself, like the massing issues that were talked about, the planning commission, many, of course, were all addressed. The materials issues were all addressed. So, as a, as a citizen, I feel really excited about the changes that we're making, and hopefully you all do too. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Let's come up and make a comment. I'm not hearing any. I will post the public comment. And then, open it up for Well, I think I'll speak.
Or discussion.
Yes. Or discussion. Questions or discussions, you speak. And I'm going to go ahead and kind of open up the discussion piece here with some things for you all to discuss and ask more questions about. One of the things that we have been discussing for quite some time is the comp plan, and our comp plan was written several years ago. And there is strategic conversation in that comp plan regarding elements of the western town look that we have asked for. This board has been working towards, in our code, getting rid of the open space, bringing the buildings to the front where the boardwalk is. And that has been in writing in the comp plan, as I said previously, for quite some time. That being said, we, as the planning commission and the board, have been working towards those for the last few months as well. To really enforce this code. And as I have been reading as well, this overlay and historical district that we have discussed previously in the comp plan currently is all the way down to the bottom. And that does put this property right in the middle of what we have been working towards. My concern is if this piece is passed, that we are negating all of the work that previous boards, trustees, mayors, managers, and ourselves, for both planning commission and the board of trustees, were negating. Josh and Emily have said that this project has moved quickly. We know that, and the prelim, even though this is the preliminary process, the planning commission really just solved this once and then passed it on to the board. And my concern is that staff and the planning commission have really not had the time to review and understand the plans and designs, as has been reiterated by both Josh and Emily. There are confusion on members of the planning commission and the board for various things, and concerns on both groups as well. We have seen through the process of Jim Kreitzer's builds and Space to Create, the architects and builders exhaustingly and many times regrettably have to go back to their architects because the planning commission and the board have not agreed. And in doing so, both of those projects have really maintained what we want the future code to look like. So, that said, thank you. But also, this project needs to have that same same consideration. And I think it's important for this board to look at those pieces. Right now, there, we do have the ability to send this back to planning commission, which allows it, it really becomes a better deal for all of us, instead of picking apart the project piece by piece as the board of trustees, but sending it back to the planning commission because of all the reasons that I just stated, allows for more time for staff and the boards to consider this project. All that said, I will open it for questions for myself. I have been discussing this with Ayers and Scott Propp, our attorney, and manager Kudron, so they are able to confirm or answer any of the questions you might have about anything that I've said. And we'll kind of open it up for discussion.
So, this is a preliminary development application. So, if we were to approve this, it goes back to the planning and commission eventually?
Yes, but we are agreeing that this is, this preliminary piece is okay. And that is the concern, is that this isn't in the comp plan, this isn't in code that we are trying and other boards have tried to implement.
But they've been approved by the planning commission. They've met all the requirements.
The planning commission
For preliminary.
Correct. The planning commission gave us a list of what is going to be reported, and then, yes, conditions, and then pushed it to pass.
Right. And then, they addressed those.
They have.
And the outside and design and
Yes, sir.
And that's a big one, basically.
Correct.
So, you're saying in the old code, we're supposed to keep this look like a western home? Right? I guess.
Yes, a lot of the, I don't, I don't want to get into the minutia of what, you know, we've been a part of, and you've been a part of some of those conversations with the planning and the board. And, and those are, you know, pieces where the open space is eliminated, and the buildings were brought to the front, you know, of the boardwalk, like you currently see, to maintain the look and feel of Grand Lake, adding in the verbiage of mountain, historical. We've discussed, you know, all of, of those types of words. And so, that, that is the piece here that I think is important to, to remember in our, in our discussions.
Well, there's already a number of buildings that don't come out to the boardwalk. So.
And so, I think the answer to that, which is something that we've seen, is that previous boards have ignored
Exactly.
what the pieces are that we've been trying to do, and they have been trying to do. I stepped in when the comp plan was already finished. And so, working towards that for as long as we have, are we going to continue to do that, or are we going to stick to the goal and move forward with what the comp plan and our discussions as the planning commission and board have been having since April? I think, well.
Yeah.
May.
Yeah. I understand it's important to stay on track with that.
How, how could we change at this point when other buildings are already set back and built recently?
So, I will, is, is, so.
I don't know. How are we doing it in good conscience?
Yes, well, true, but this is what happens in communities, in any community across the country. Frazier, on their website, has, code is constantly changing. So, when builders or construction come in, at that point, they know that the code is constantly changing. This group, just like Space to Create and other projects, they've known that this code is in process, and they have committed to town in good faith, as being a good neighbor to the community, what the town wants. And we know by consensus that the general public and both boards want this framework. And so, they have lived up to that. So, you know, that's, that's the other side of the coin. Where, where's the good faith, good neighbor piece coming in on both sides?
Yep. Yeah, you're, you're not making the reason.
I'm not making the easy, but that's not always my job, is to make the easy, and receiving the phone calls and concerns that I have from various board and planning commission. It's important that I raised this issue so that it's, it's understood.
We'll start, cut you off here.
Oh, no, I totally agree. Yeah, I agree. I think we're at a crucial point right now, and we should get back to the planning commission. Makes sense. We either need to stick to our guns or not. I think we need to get on, on track really, what they're trying to do.
Yeah.
Just, just out of curiosity, Dan, which buildings have you done?
The, the, set back, the buildings that were or, well, they come out to the boardwalk. There's a few buildings that are set back.
I, I agree, but I think what the mayor was talking about was the historical area, which is literally the main diner in Tenham. So, there really hasn't been any new buildings going up to the east of that line yet. I think that's what we're generally going for on that historical.
The piece of the historical area, and there will be an overlay as well, for lake and park is what has been discussed. And vine was discussed, but considering the projects that have taken place, do we move it down? And that, those decisions have nothing exactly for what you brought up.
True.
So, if this is approved as a preliminary development application, then what, will those will soon be addressed at the final?
No, because you're agreeing to what this is.
The reason is the mark sits on the lot.
And. You want to speak to that piece a little bit more just to clarify that the preliminary process is preliminary, but we're saying we agree with this piece. And that, that will be what goes back to the planning commission. So that will turn eight for discussing doing.
I think one of the directions that the mayor was looking for the board to consider is that if you all are working from a position of agreement that this project is getting close, overlapping. And you want to look at it a little bit more. By approving the preliminary, you are approving the concept. You're approving the setbacks. You're approving the courtyard in the front. And I think the mayor is looking for this board to not make a rush decision and to consider that other possibility. And it, it's it's better to the applicant to let them know what may be coming up than to give them an expectation of they're going to come back to a final. And, and then they get surprised when their expectation would be that as long as it's built to what this, the pictures, the pictures look like, you're going to say okay.
I think they've already been surprised.
I have no doubt. But what we and what you as the board are looking to do is to manage that timing for this particular project because it isn't going to get any better.
My goal in starting tomorrow is continuing to work with Ayers, staff, and planning commission, and then you all to, you know, really firm up these codes. We've, we've done enough when it's gone on long enough and it is a horrible thing to be a part of for you all. This is a very difficult position for us as a board, myself personally. And unfortunately, as I was at the mayor, manager, commissioner meeting in Winter Park today, these are issues that just about every municipality in county has gone through at some point. So we are not new to this. This is what happens when you change codes. And as I said before, they are constantly changing. So at this, you know, it's, it's not, this is extremely difficult. And as we all know, the meetings have been difficult lately with these projects. And that's why I'm pushing the next few weeks to have this firmed up. But this is how many municipalities run and they are constantly evolving and changing.
I feel like if this building was a lot further away, it wouldn't blend in as well as it does on that corner with the hub and the pizzeria and all that other outside seating. I just feel like it blends in really well where, where it is.
And so keep in mind that that piece, then you are negating the historical area that we are trying to implement if it starts there. We can love the building all day. And the materials are fine and everything else, but we are essentially negating what the comp plan and what we're working towards.
So are you going to reuse the building the second?
No.
It's getting torn down.
Yes.
So we could move this building forward, couldn't we?
I'm sorry.
We could go this building forward, couldn't we?
There's a number of factors that play into that.
Yeah, I don't know what there is. That's why.
Yeah, that's probably too difficult to answer in a, a sentence or two, but there's a number of factors that play into that, existing factors with property and and that sort of thing, as well as primarily the existing code and the open space and different things like that.
Which I think it was explained last week by Ayers that you will have options when the code's changing. So.
We will have options, however, we cannot be held to the standard of the new code.
Correct.
Correct. So the building and the concept that we're presenting does follow all current code regulations.
So this is the conundrum that we find ourselves in where we have gone through this in several other areas with several other builds. And there has been the good faith, good neighbor. We will work to create, design, build what the town is wanting because we are in this stage. So there, this is the conundrum that we're both in. Scott, I see that your faces joined us. Do you have anything you want to say or add? Or are you just listening?
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, just a couple of comments. I think there is a legitimate concern that if you approve the planned development plan or the preliminary development plan, that you are locked into certain aspects for the final development plan because and, and Emily probably can comment on this better than I can, but in, in general, the final development plan says that, that you have to provide more specific detailed plans that are consistent with the preliminary development plan. So the preliminary development plan really does become sort of a guiding document. So I think if you're going to make a decision one way or the other, this is probably the crossroad to do it at. But I think the basic question is, you know, can you apply the, what you anticipated adopting as your historical district standards to this application, which was in place before you've got those historical district standards in place? And it's sort of this transition period that you always go through anytime that you make big changes in your code. You know, how do you decide when it applies to the new stuff? Well, there's an argument that the, the, the key point is when the application is, not when it's filed, but when it's deemed to be complete. That then you get to apply those rules throughout the process. And that's usually the case, but not always. For example, if you submit an application and you later discover that that application is not complete, then you have to refile and you start a new date. Also, if you have an application that has changed since it was originally filed, and certainly if it has changed substantially since it was considered by the planning commission, then, then it needs to go back to the planning commission so that they can consider the, the new project. The other doctrine that comes into play here sometimes is what's called the pending legislation doctrine, which says that if you submit an application and at the time you submit the application, you either knew or should have known that the rules were about to change, then you can in certain circumstances be held to those new rules because the idea is that you knew that the rules were going to change. You knew that there was, you know, an interest in moving toward this new historical district. And so you don't want to create this sort of race to the, the town hall to, to get your project in before they make those changes. So I don't know how much, it, it seems to me like they've been working on these historical district standards for a while and either were known or should have been known to the applicant at the time. So those are sort of all the, the legal approaches. I, I guess the last one is, and I, I always hesitate to use the M word, but if the town is having problems with wanting to put these new regulations in place, but people are trying to get applications in under the old regulations, then the typical solution is to, to establish a moratorium on applications until you can get the new regulations in place. And and I, as I say, I, I never really encourage people to impose a moratorium unless it really is necessary just to prevent this sort of race to the town hall. But having said all that, that's really sort of the legal explanation of, you know, when you can count on standards and when you can't. What has happened in the past, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing in the discussion, is that rather than go to sort of these legal remedies of when you're, you are vested with the process and when you aren't, that the town has worked with people as they come in to let them know this is what we're looking for, even though those standards aren't in place. And has generally achieved what I would consider voluntary compliance with that approach. My experience in these circumstances is that both the town and the applicant always, are always better off if they can come to an agreement that yes, those standards aren't in place yet, but that's where we want to go. So how can we work together to get there? And, and so that's why I would encourage the applicants to work with the board. You know, if the historical district standards are out there, I'd encourage them to work toward those historical district standards and, and to re-refer it to the planning commission to see how they, how this project compares to those historic district standards. But to do that sort of a, as a voluntary matter rather than a compelled manner. I, I think that there are grounds, as I say, in some circumstances where the board could force that to happen. And, and I don't know if those happened here under the, the pending legislation doctrine. But as I say, I think the parties are always better off if they can say, well, this is what we want to end up with and work toward that collegially, I guess I would say. But, but those are my comments.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott from, from the board regarding anything you just said? You know, do you have a question for?
I'm just interested to know if there's any.
No, if you might come into the microphone.
Yeah, certainly. I'm interested to know if there isn't, if you guys can help me understand any official progress that's been made on that or any progress of note as far as guidelines we, you know, intend to pass and if there's been and actually passed so far.
We started this process, discussion with Ayers in April. And we have had two meetings, both planning commission and board at the same time, workshop type meetings. And have put together essentially photos, images, discussion pieces on what we want the architecture to look like, what we want the streetscape to look like, look and feel, historical and the layovers of yes. To answer your question, there's been several and continuing to be discussions. But as far as passing anything, we are waiting for Ayers to finish compiling the specific code. And then that will go to both boards to agree on. I do know, and I, I, I really liked the word that Mr. Krov used with voluntarily. That is a lot of what we have seen with other building projects. And as painful as voluntarily still is, it's really mutually beneficial for all parties. And working with us as you've worked with Ayers, I think is critical to this as well. But I do know through conversations that you have been made aware from the very beginning that these code changes and the historical pieces have been in play. And that's a piece where I think the voluntary piece comes in. Is that that's what this town is striving to do. And the people in the community, the businesses, the boards are really wanting that. And most of that has been unanimous in all of our discussion.
Scott, in the case of this, going back to the planning commission, could you give us an example of how to best work a motion for board?
Yeah, I think the, the motion, if you, if you wanted to send it back to the planning commission would be a motion to re-fer the application to the planning commission to consider its compatibility or compliance with the pending historical district standards. Or the anticipated historical district standards, because I think that's really the question you want the planning commission to answer.
Could you repeat that for Mayor Krov, Tim Soban, please?
I'm sorry, if that was directed to me, I, I couldn't understand.
I'm sorry. Yes. Could you repeat version of what you just said, Mayor President Soban?
Sure. Yeah, it would be to re-fer the matter to the planning commission. So the planning commission can provide you with a recommendation as to the compliance or compatibility of this application with the town's proposed historical district standards.
Well, what streets, the historical district in the startup?
Well, we are starting it for back when we last discussed.
We've, we've discussed both Vine and Hancock. There's been and some of that, or excuse me, Vine and Ellsworth. And the discussion is still historical district, possibly with a no group.
Well. Sitting here thinking, I thought about eight or 10 more buildings or something like that. And two of them are on the Vine side going towards downtown. One is Frieda's.
And, and so let's, this.
Yes, you, you got to roll the historical context though, because I mean, we could say the hot dog shack down the way is vastly different than the code, but that little tiny building has been there for forty years. So as as this entire conversation has even started and, and what we started talking about with the historical district prior was, you know, in the last like fifteen years, things are changing from what we want. Now, as the mayor stated like thirty years ago, when they started kind of disregarding some of the codes that were there in the first place, you can't lay back on any of that right now.
Well, no, I'm just wondering when the code was established. So I get a better timeline of when these buildings were built, if they're complying with that.
That would be a very difficult thing to go back on right now because so many of these buildings have been here for an extremely long time. And then some of them have been remodeled or renovated. One of the things, and I'm not sure who has heard me say this before, but to reiterate, we realized that when the troublesome fire came through, that if the town would have burned to the ground, that the buildings that are currently there on Main Street would not have been able to rebuild the way that they are because of the current code. The open space requirements, materials, everything. And so that's when a lot of this came into play. Is that if we want to be able to rebuild our community in that historical fashion, we have to take it from where it is today.
Yeah, that gives me a better idea on our timeline, when this, when this discussion was first talked about, um, over the way you're talking.
Even before mine.
Yeah, okay.
And, and those are the reasons that this is critical in a lot of ways. We know some of these buildings are going to be purchased and demolished. And God forbid something tragic. And this is to protect our community.
Well, I get it. I get it. I'm just trying to get as educated as I can to make a good decision.
Great question.
You're right. I make a motion to refer a resolution thirty six, twenty twenty five back to the planning commission to review the compatibility of this application with the pending historical district standards.
I have a motion.
Second.
Do you have a second, please, for the board?
Trustee Mill.
Aye.
Trustee Armson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Shoner.
Name.
Trustee Casso or Mayor President Soban.
Aye.
Mayor Brust.
Aye. Motion passes. I would like to. I would like to say, I know this. I mean, I know, because we sit here quite a bit of the time and go through this. And it is difficult and you're in a difficult timeframe. But I hope that this is. It hurts as little as it could had we just completely, you know, continued to go down a different road. And we always encourage build, we always encourage business. I think we'll have the planning commission and. Ayers continue to help you in this process. Okay, moving on to see consideration of resolution for three seven seven Lake Cove.
Well, trustees are bringing up in the. Current tax for the town as well as the voter portion. This request for review and approval proposed new boat house in Shadow Mountain reservoir at three seven seven Lake Cove Drive in Grand Lake, Colorado. This memo is submitted to the Grand Lake Board of Trustees, review and consideration for construction, proposed composed. New private boathouse intended for storage and maintenance of one watercraft properly located at three seventy seven Lake Cove Drive. Owned by Ryan Miller of Centine, Colorado, but used situated along the Shadow Mountain reservoir shoreline. In project description. Private boathouse will be a single storage structure designed for the storage of a single equipment watercraft. And recreational equipment similar in size as mentioned to other boathouses on Shadow Mountain Reservoir. And the proposed dimensions are thirty one and a half feet, the width is eighteen feet. The height is eighteen feet from the waterline and the total building footprint is five hundred sixty seven square. Materials of the boathouse will be constructed with materials chosen to match the residents. The zoning compliance and considerations. The proposed boathouse has been designed to comply with relevant sections of Grand Lake municipal code. And the three lakes designed district guidelines. Specifically those pertaining to accessory structures, shoreline development including setbacks thirty five feet from the shoreline. Height restrictions sixteen feet from the water surface. Surface gradient coverage less than six hundred square feet. Water quality, environmental protection. In addition, the letter also held holds clearance from the US Department of Agriculture, the Forest Service. And has to deliver an indemnification letter in town Grand Lake. Also have a letter from Army for vintage. Justification of benefits, the construction of the proposed house will provide security and protected storage. From water craft, it's only the lifespan and reducing wear from exposure to the elements. It will also help maintain a tidy shoreline by avoiding providing dedicated space for equipment. The design is in keeping with the character of lakefront properties and represents the reasonable. Developmental responsible development property. Request and conclusion respectfully requests that the Grand Lake Board of Trustees review. An approval of the proposed new boathouse at three seventy seven Lake Cove. We believe this project is is consistent with the town's vision for lakefront development. Adheres to applicable zoning regulations and will be an aesthetically pleasing and functional addition to the property. Any questions? Yeah, folks.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Bruce.
Has this been to any other committees prior to us, by the commission, you mentioned for us?
By the commission, yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and refuse myself from this because I didn't really pay attention. My, my, my buddy's planning on building this and I'm pretty sure he's gonna ask for my help, so.
This is gonna fall down.
I love the boathouses. I think there's anything more Grand Lake than the boathouses.
Were there any letters sent out to neighbors within two hundred feet?
Yes, there were, and we got one response. We did send out letters to the neighbors within two hundred foot of the property. We received one response and the homeowner was concerned that the trees were going to be disturbed. Spoke with the contractor and have no need to destroy or renovate the trees.
I'm hoping I'm in there fighting after that, thanks.
I will entertain action.
If you're spending really good, really slow, anyone else wants to agree the resolution?
I'm trying to send. Yeah, there you go.
I make the motion, I'm totally guessing this, I'm making the motion to approve resolution thirty eight twenty five, resolution recommending the approval of shoreline variance for. Three seventy seven Lake Cove Drive for a boat.
I have a motion.
This is consideration of resolution forty one.
Yes.
Mine says thirty.
So we gotta make sure we say the right one.
I think there's a couple of things, our, the, the one online is different than. This printout, but. It is consideration of resolution forty one dash twenty twenty five approving a shoreline setback variance for a boathouse to be located. At three three seven Lake Cove.
Three seven seven.
Yep. Good.
Uh, I was all, okay, yes.
I have a motion and a second, please hold the board.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Mills.
Hi.
Trustee Casso.
Hi.
Trustee Shoner.
Hi.
Okay, and Mayor Prudential Sovan.
Hi.
Mayor Burke.
Uh, I, motion is approved. Thank you, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next is D consideration of resolution thirty nine dash twenty twenty five.
Thank you, trustee. At the June twenty third twenty twenty five board trustees meeting, trustees vote to approve the services contract of Elk Mountain Construction. As general contractor for the town's space decrees project. Subject of that approval was a condition that the contractor provides a gross maximum price for the project's construction. Elk Mountain Construction has provided a complete project cost and GMP for your approval. The board should review the documents, ask any clarifying questions. And approve, approve the conditions or deny the proposal. Staff does recommend approval of this proposal. I do have with me Tony Strickland representing Elk Mountain Construction to answer any questions that you may have. And our construction manager. Doug is with us as well to answer any questions based upon his estimates over the last six months. And I can answer any questions. Joe, you want to come up and give us your name and address for record?
Hi, I'm Joey Strickland of Elk Mountain Construction of the Port of N U S, Oregon, ready?
Thank you.
Any questions? Give us a second, he'll look through.
Is there a rock clause in here? Specifically, you know, I saw that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rock clause for activation, so like we needed this core of the area.
I apologize, Jimmy is more if I'm gonna answer these types of things, but I found when we start performing this. Excavation on this project, it will not be subcontracted out and we have any means. Of working with unforcing things and have considered them like in our other.
Including the case of possibility blasting drilling?
That is not forcing at this time, but nobody knows what's on the earth until we start digging in it. Oh, that monitoring call.
Well, you know, in terms of the soils report that, you know, we was up to at and.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Something behind you is sweeping the fence, Brian, being glad.
Anyway, soil report did not indicate anything that we looked at and, you know, Jimmy's dug all over this place and so. We we spent a lot of time talking about, we're gonna do an open hole investigation, so if we take whatever, and we had shallow areas. So we're not anticipating any kind of big rock removal on the foundation.
One of the foundations is built on slide, the other one is crawl space, so the amount of ex- excavation is pretty limited in this case. To the deep underground utility.
Is there any reason, I've never seen this before, with the sub exclusion? The reason for that?
Yeah, we had, we had a lot of discussion with that between civil engineer, soils engineer. We are putting in a foundation drain around the crawl space that will tie into storm sewer. So we're not going to be needing cell pumps. There were some mentioning of cell pumps. And so they just excluded cell pumps because we're not putting in individual cell pumps.
I don't know, foresee that, so that's kind of where. That comes from. One thing, I I saw some sort of A work happening recently, especially with the. Stormwater runoff, the stormwater line will be existing. The catch basin will say existing on one of the spots in the property, is that correct?
There's actually gonna be, both of them remain or being brought back out of the building footprint, not towards park. But yeah, it's gonna be, they'll, they'll go forward, remain, and we're planning on tying the. The foundation drain is in two though.
Okay, and that is not gonna become an issue when it comes to. The footing, that was a good depth where.
They're outside of footing, they're gonna be back towards park, so they won't be inside inside of footprint though.
Correct, but the the underground portion of it is around from the center of the property to the street, correct?
Oh, no, there'll be, there'll be all that, if whatever comes out, it's gonna be put back in, compaction tests are gonna be taken. We have soils testing, Kumar's gonna be doing all soils testing.
But any existing stormwater lines on the place, like just like the the piping that's existing.
Right, probably more now.
That's thrown out. And then it's just moved to the north and it's becoming a shorter pipe to park, correct? I'm just forcing the prop player getting to the depth of that possibly and being issues. I want to make sure that was already addressed, correct?
Yeah, there's, there won't, there won't be a problem.
Um, the builder's risk insurance. Did you reveal that is on us and then did we already take care of that?
We're still giving numbers. To the insurance, I'm working with three different companies. On that. Um, this, this number is based upon approximation. Using previous numbers from other projects at Elk Mountains.
Do you have a question for Sam? You know what my question's gonna be? Last time we got, the last time we got, we're built this like four hundred thousand. And we approved the fleet, can say we won't be that.
With some of those adjustments, we're a little bit higher. And some of that is because now that we have not only the GMP. And we have the difference in the cost of the sewers. Currently the gap with including eighty thousand dollars in use taxes that I will be coming to the town to waive. And two hundred thirty six thousand. And owner's contingency that we do plan to use, it's five hundred and forty eight thousand. I'll be working with the grand foundation to ensure that that is done with revolving fund loan. Should have answers by the end of September, which still gives me forty five days to my deadline.
In some previous conversations, I'm still weren't sure of courtyard material, has that come to a consensus?
Empty concrete, I believe.
The, right now, the drawings have a patterned concrete with saw cutting in it. Do you know, there is no stamp in the concrete.
Now would be included in landscaping here, correct?
Well, that's, there's, yeah, concrete, the site concrete number has a landscaping is basically plantings and. The fire pit area and all, all plants.
Well, you know, anyone else?
Our project still has a sprinkling at under five hundred dollars square foot, four hundred eighty four dollars.
Just one more thing. Missed it, but I did see snowplow for winter conditions, is there any mention of. Brown buying heaters, anything like that at the moment?
You know, the winter conditions are just my allowance, but we're not interested in paying a lot of that because we're hoping to have the foundations in. Before we have any, any of that and. The Makerspace Building will be right now projected on the schedule of Makerspace Building will be turned over to. In by probably mid-December and the interior work to start. So we're really hoping that that allowance is something that we give the town back.
And Jimmy said, he's around town a lot, there won't be snow.
He warned me that Matt.
That's the answer to Matt, what Matt said, get it out there by three AM.
Um, without having the. Previous numbers for like overall. Where's this, I, I think it's.
Two hundred thousand less.
Pretty close to what we had before.
Yeah, we were pushing three five.
Okay, thank you. With the Rocky Mountain repertory, repertory structures you guys built, you have that. Storage lot immediately across the street when it comes to being more defined space. You think you guys will be able to operate with the land underneath the built site? For the most part?
Yes.
How are units are even trying to be stored nearby?
Does that include possibility of other construction materials or just?
Yeah. There isn't a whole lot because. When the Makerspace Building comes in, the empty site. Will be available because the foundation will have come, been built. And then once the Makerspace is up, that courtyard room, it's kind of interesting the way that each of these steps are timing on.
I will entertain a motion, please.
Remove to approve resolution thirty nine dash twenty twenty five approving the guarantee maximum price. Qualification letter with Elk Mountain Construction for space to.
Second, I have a motion in a second, please hold the board. Second, I have a motion in a second, please hold the board.
Trustee Mills. Trustee Miller. Trustee Armson. Trustee Casso. Trustee Shoner. Mayor Breton Sovan.
I, motion passes, thank you for your presentation tonight, being here and. Thinking you're doing and I, I'd like to. Okay, um, future items of board consideration, I've got. A couple and more there just to narrate discussions from earlier, which, you know, the middle part discussion. And, uh. Cove, and I think we're all in agreement that. We'll need to move some of this forward and quickly and I am obviously. A willing party, uh, having the time and, um. Yeah, thank you, anything else that I have. I have, anybody have?
Yeah, to kind of continue our historic district conversations. Down the pipeline in less than a year. Building code is changing. Was a fires a resilience seat out coming out of the state. And it's gonna fall on municipalities to some decisions, so. As we have these conversations of historic district materials, X, Y, Z. Just knows it's coming down, right, so.
Yes, Chief Saint Germain talked about some of that in his update, we can leave it. You know, that's a huge piece of this code part as, as well, so. Oh, no, you're fine, I, I just, no, he's very informed and he mentioned it, so he'll be up into this conversation. For sure. Mayor's report. Usually I have something written and, and of all days that there's an audience, I hope don't. I think I was more stressed out today about the nine hundred. Resolution than anything and. I wanna speak to the board to that piece and the planning commission as well, is that this is the part of our job that is not pleasant. And the last two meetings, last meeting and this one have been the most difficult I have ever had. Not just as the mayor, but just in general. And they're extremely difficult and I think it's important that we really. Work to finishing this code and that's gonna come to staff, but that's also going to come to you all as well. So as you're in town, riding your bike, walking, driving, whatever it is, really take into consideration. The things that we've already discussed. And I will be providing notes from Josh. With Josh and staff as to what those discussions have really been as reminders. And I think it would be wise for me to put in the photos that we looked at and others that even Mr. Kreizer. Has shared with us as well. And so please, please keep those, that code piece in mind, but for the new trustees. I know that these last two meetings have been difficult and I appreciate that. And you all have my phone number to discuss any of this, if you need emotional support, I'm here for you. And then, um, I'll just move on a little bit to the mayor manager and commissioner meeting. That manager Pudron and I went to today, I have just a few notes in general that I wanted to share. Of what's going on within our county and one of the big ones is there's a lot with the roads. Uh, they are gonna be doing some earthed pass improvements before the winter, before the snowfall. One, or the Frazier, uh, mayor is also one of the coordinators with CDOT. And Floyd Hill Project will be stopping just before the snowfalls of the winter, so. That would be nice to have that sideline for a while. Frazier will be doing a phase two next summer and they will be widening the road. From, what did he say, YMCA area to Tavernash and so you can.
Put shoulders on the drop off there.
They are working on four lanes through Winter Park, that's a twenty twenty nine project, but they're thirty percent funded for that and if they. Get funded sooner, that project can come into fruition faster. Nick with Winter Park mentioned that Earthed Pass does tell us that we are on the list for CDOT with the Potable Crew, but. And road movements, but we're on the list. One of the interesting pieces that I think is important to talk about, just if you're interested is there's a lot of. Uh, there's gonna be some legislation from the county on the limit of oil and gas exploration in our area. A lot of the areas that this oil and gas exploration could take place are in arsenic byways from. Kremlin to Winter Park to Grand Lake and this commissioners will be really just asking. That the Colorado oil and gas remain neutral at this time on it. Um, I thought that was pretty interesting because I didn't really think about that. Um, you all know how I feel about the wolves and, um. So far this year, there's been six million dollars spent and. Around. Seventy percent of the death rate. I won't get into the politics of it, you wanna call me, I'll share. But I think it's really important that we be aware of this, they are not putting it on hold like they said they were going to. And there will be another ten to fifteen wolves that will be dropped off this fall. And they have seen wolves even over towards Boulder. And the last thing that I want to speak to tonight is the, from the Kremlin. Town manager was the car accidents and the speeding reckless driving. That has taken place on the way to Kremlin. And they have put out more patrols, they're looking for more CPS funding. So one, don't get a speeding ticket, but don't drive reckless, please. And that's actually.
Is that a time for it?
Three, three PM.
I realize that this, that is not on this entire wire in need.
Thanks for letting us know. This is, this is actually the program that's gonna be handed out.
Okay, so that's all I have, thank you, everyone, extremely thankful for. You all being here and patience of the board and the minutes I was. Would love to have another motion. Almost seven thirty. I have a motion in a second, please hold the board.
Trustee Armson. Trustee Shoner. Trustee Miller. Trustee Casso, I'm trusty Mill, Mills. Mayor Breton Sovan.
I, motion passes, thank you, everyone, have a good evening.